Okay, this May 20th meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School District will come to order. I just say we're delighted to be here in Moheramit in the Dennis Harrington Cafeteria Gymnasium. So it's a pleasure, pleasure to be here.[14.29][14.29](APPLAUSE). Obviously, a special night where we're honoring some retirees who've given great service to this district. But we'll start with a public comment. Anyone? Anyone, as they said, first Bueller's Day Off? Anyone? Anyone? So we'll move forward to the approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the May 6th, 2015 regular minutes?
I will motion to approve the May 6th regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Are there corrections? Maria?
On the first page, Maria Barth presented. I just wanted to add, which I said, she was an Oyster River graduate, the author.
Okay. Okay, so add "Lighting the Earth."
Thank you.
And I think probably that should be underlined, just as, you know, as a book title. (LAUGHTER). My English is bad.
On page two, just to make a minor addition, when I was talking about the interpretive signage from the fifth grade classes at Wagon Hill, which will explain both the history and, I don't remember the words I used, but it was the, kind of the nature, that was a big part of it, was the nature explanation, so I could try to think of some wording for that.
It would explain both the history and then what else would you like to add?
Ecology or something?
Yeah, it was maybe ecology.
And ecology?
Ecology.
And ecology.
And ecology, okay, thank you.
Okay. Other corrections, changes? Okay, with those changes, could we have a vote then? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The minutes are passed. So we have announcements and commendations from the district. Are there any? Okay.
I have a couple, I'll try to be brief. Art teachers, Joe Boucher, a fifth and sixth grade art teacher, did some great work last weekend over at Bedrock Gardens. He also had the assistance of some projects from Al Lofgren, so kudos to him. Tomorrow night, we're having an art show at the middle school. That's part of our Service Palooza project. I see that orange T-shirt over there, we'll have over 700 staff members and students in the community tomorrow performing community service. The goal is that, again, just to give back to the community that I feel strongly gives so much to us. Last Thursday, I was fortunate, I got to head up to Plymouth State University, used to be called College when I was there, and Lynda Reeve and I headed up with a dozen or so students. It's like a highlight of the year for me, it's really special, but I want to make sure these eighth graders are recognized. In terms of the Scholastic Writing Awards, they've been around for 90 years, and this is a nonprofit organization which identifies teachers from all around the country for their exceptional writing, especially with their personal voice. The awards are the longest running in the nation. They've been around for 90 years, so I'd like to read quickly the students that were recognized. Honorable mention, Madeline Alfons, Patty Anderson, Blake Bartel, Samuel Blanger, Olivia Colaruso, Ariana Capola, Gwenneth Crossman, Megan Dirksmeyer, Sky Jelsimoni, Emily Hillary Gould, Emmy Goyette, Charlie Haskell, Grace Henry, Sam Howland, Aiden Kaya, Tanner Kaya, he received two awards, Sam McGregor, Devon McLean, Ian Miles, Sophie Rogers received two awards, Rachel Smith, Anastasia Simansky, Alexandria Whitehouse, Matthew Williams, and Jordan Zircher, Silver Keys, which is course of special recognition, Sarah Caldwell, Abby Craig, Gwenneth Crossman, Emily, Emma Hillary Gould, Aiden Hackenberg, Anna Haye, Charlie Haskell, Sam Howland, Devon McLean, David Redman, and Rachel Smith. And Rachel Smith also received a Gold Key Award. Our writing teachers do an exceptional job, and it's kind of significant, of course, it's a K8 thing, in terms of why our students are good writers, so congratulations to all our teachers that teach writing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jake, could you give the list?
Other district announcements and commendations? Dennis?
This is a night for retirements, and I just wanted to inform the board that Jan Roberts, who was a teacher in Oyster River for somewhere around 30 years, spent the last 12 years in this school, helping to create 82 new teachers in collaboration with the University of New Hampshire. She retired, she's retired this year. Just like to recognize her. We had a day of diversity here on the 11th that connects with the theme that we've had all year, where we had sticks and stones here, earlier in the year, and on the 11th, we had five Peace Corps volunteers from around the world, retired Peace Corps volunteers, all the way back to my era, to people who have recently served as part of what was going on. In addition, we had the Mandarin program here, helping demonstrate some of the work that they do, and several other people from around the world. And I don't know, there were 52 flags that were paraded through this auditorium, representing the 52 different countries in the world who have had children at this school over the last 26 years. And finally, to the PTO, the science club with 25 kids, and the art club with 25 kids is currently functioning, it's toward the end of the year, and yet it's like it were September.
Thank you, Dennis. Are there announcements?
I will be short. Todd Allen from the high school. Just a quick reminder that the Spring Musical starts tomorrow night, so it's Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night at 7:00, Sunday matinee at 2:00. The show they're doing is Fame. If you've never been to a high school musical, you're missing out, so please check it out. Tremendous, tremendous talent. And I would also tell you, tickets are on sale at the box office, which is in the lobby of the high school, and they do sell out, particularly the first couple of nights. They sell a lot of tickets, so buying your tickets ahead of time is a good plan. One other thing, I botched a date at the last board meeting for the Power of One night. I wanted to make sure I put a plug in for the Power of One exhibition, which is next Thursday, the 28th, 5:30 to 7:00. Great event. 170 or 80 freshmen have all done all these great projects. The level of community service work that's going on across the building is just amazing. Every day, there's something going on. Today, they were doing a bone marrow drive, so it's some really, really, really good stuff going on. And then lastly, today was the first day of smarter balance testing at the high school. I'm not going to bore you with details. Carolyn will be doing a brief update in a little bit, and I'll talk to you about that later on. Thanks.
Thanks. Others? Board, and I think we'll move to the recognition of retirees.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we're going to recognize staff members who service the district at the elementary level. In our next board meeting, we'll recognize those who've served at the middle school and high school level. The first person that I would like to recognize tonight is Adele Pulitzer. She's a school librarian at Masteway. And just as I'm introducing Carrie, I just want to share with the board, Adele started at the library in 1990, at the Mastway Library, as a paraprofessional. She was making $5.55 an hour. Her total salary for that year was $3,536. Having said that, I'll turn the podium.[562.32][562.32](LAUGHTER).
Thank you, everyone. I am pleased to recognize one of Mastway's finest, Adele Pulitzer, our librarian. She, Adele started off her career actually working at the Oyster River, it was Oyster River Elementary School, and then working with the elementary students, and then when the middle school kind of emerged, she was working with both the elementary kids and the middle school kids. So she had a whole snafu throughout the district, and then also after that, came over to Mastway. So we've been fortunate to have her, and my records, we had her since 2005. So she has served students all throughout the district at a variety of different levels, and we've been thrilled to have her. Over the years, she's worked tirelessly to provide the best quality literature and resources for our children. In addition, she teaches children research skills, leads genre studies, and brings joy to an impeccably literacy-rich learning center. Adele has served in numerous committees, managed countless book fairs, and has organized outstanding Read Across America events. Many of you have been to them and have been guest readers, and we thank you for that. The single event is a real big tradition at Mastway, is really a favorite, and it's anticipated every year, and it's because of Adele's guidance, positive communication, and her dedication that it's so successful. One bit about Adele that many of you may not know is that she really is the thread that goes between the staff members at Mastway. An example of this is that each month, Adele connects with grade-level teachers, asks ...the honor of working with Adele Pulitzer, as she guided our elementary students through their learning journey. Her kindness, encouragement, and love of learning have benefited our students in reaching their highest potential. Really, hearing Adele read aloud, which I'm sure some of you have, is truly magical. It often draws the adults from the hallway in to take an extra look and see what's going on, and anticipate what's going to happen next. Adele's constantly learning. She's constantly active. She is not a stagnant person at all. She's highly loved and respected member of Mastway. She could not be here tonight because she is actually hearing Tom Brokaw at the Music Hall, learning some more, so it's pretty neat. We pass along our best wishes to Adele as she embarks on her next page in her life's story, and we really can't wait to read what happens next, because we know it's going to be wonderful. So thank you, Adele, for all of your years of service at Oyster River.
So Carrie.[779.32][779.32](APPLAUSE). The chair is going to honor each retiree with just a small gift certificate and recognition of this service, so thank you so much. Thank you for that, Carrie, and we wish her the very best as well. The next person to be recognized is Sharon McManus, third-grade teacher here at Moheramit. She started in the district in 1972. I'm sure they really appreciate my doing this.[813.01][813.01](LAUGHTER). 1972, as a grade-five teacher, making $6,600 for that first year. So Dennis, and...
You want to begin?
Yep, you start, and then...
I have three.
We're going to do one at a time?
Well, I'm going to do them all together.
Well, if you just do one at a time, Dennis, because I want each person to have...
I spent an hour.[841.01][841.01](LAUGHTER). So, I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker.
Always, you're always difficult.
I'm always difficult. So I actually spent three days on this. Has to be in my head first. Tonight is both a celebration and difficult time for the principal, who has worked with these three fine people for so long. Susan. Can you come up here? You have been a colleague for over 30 years, and my principalship has always been...
Forty.
Forty? Oh, my goodness.[888.82][888.82](LAUGHTER). And my principalship has always been better, because you have been both challenge and support. I cannot forget the many times you have stepped up to serve so many children in so many varied circumstances, going back to our early days in Somersworth. Sharon, would you come up, please? Sharon, you have been part of Somersworth, part of Moheramit since we opened, and have provided support for decades of children that I don't know about. Your open recognition of the good that staff does on a daily basis is noticed by all of your colleagues and your principal. Your open recognition of the goods that staff does is significant.
Come up here.
Brenda, your leadership in finding common assessment tools for reading and building the multiple text collection to a state-of-the-art collection is something to be proud of. It is such a testament to your knowledge and persistent movement towards a desired outcome. Decades of children will benefit from what you have helped us to put into action. There are attributes that you all have in common. All three of you speak your mind, and most importantly, are able to synthesize. All three of you confront issues when you think they need to be confronted. All three of you are respectful of varied points of view, and at the same time, over the years, have been able to support some decisions that I've made that you thought weren't so good. All three of you have unconditionally put children first in your movement towards decisions. You have the respect of this principal, and I will miss having you here. You all understand that in our profession, it is the daily toil with children that is most important. It will never be the momentary flash. Take some time to be away, and come back to visit this wonder-filled school system, filled with talented staff like yourselves. Find ways to share the wisdom of the profession with those who need to know. I want to conclude with some quotes for an old friend, from an old friend, and then convince you on your way out to sit on the bench before you leave, that Dr. Seuss helped to create. So I have some quotes from Dr. Seuss. If I can keep from coughing. You were not born to fit in. You were born to stand out. Sometimes you will never know the value of a moment until it becomes a memory. Be what you are and say what you feel, because those who mind do not matter, and those who matter do not mind. Sometimes you never know the value of a moment until it becomes a memory. You are off to great places. Today is your day. Your mountain is waiting, so get on your way.[1125.74][1125.74](LAUGHTER). And don't forget to sit on the bench that sets you on your way out. Now I know that, now the superintendent wants individual attention, so I'm going to introduce Ann Riley. And they can stay up here equally as we may.
I would think that Brenda didn't want to stay up here, but do you want to stay up here? All right, so now she's going to have to pinch me if I start to cry, because she's staying up here. I'm Ann Riley. I teach second grade, and I have had the pleasure of working closely with Brenda Zanowski for many years, and I also consider her to be a treasured friend. It's been a challenge for me to write a tribute about my friend and colleague that would fit the time constraint of one minute, but I'm such a second grader at heart, I timed myself, I got it to 1 minute 20 seconds. So after this struggle, I decided I would look to poetry to help me distill my thoughts and my feelings down to the essential truth. I'm going to loosely paraphrase New Hampshire poet Charles Simick to help me begin. Inside her empty bottle, she was constructing a lighthouse while all the others were making ships. When Brenda came to Moheramit as our first-ever reading specialist, we were all very busy making our own ships. Dennis. Brenda built on our strengths and provided the resources and gentle guidance to help us develop as more effective and skillful teachers of literacy. She worked with children who struggled mightily to learn, to read, and write, and the result has been a happy collaboration, with increasingly more and more children becoming engaged and passionate readers. Brenda built her lighthouse stone by stone, and its light is strong and enduring. Oh, you've got to pinch me. Pinch me. Thank you. Okay, I can finish. Although she is departing, that beacon will remain for those of us here at Moheramit who will continue the work every day. So you better hold my hand now, because I'm really going to... Godspeed and safe travels, dear Brenda. All our thanks and best wishes go with you and Tom as you embark on your next adventures. Thank you.
Thank you.[1281.64][1281.64](APPLAUSE).
Sorry, next is Leschnuck.
So Ann and I were talking before, saying how, you know, what an honor it is to be asked to speak about, for me, my dearest friend and colleague. And a minute just doesn't do it, but I ended up sitting in front of that blank screen, thinking, how can I honor this woman, the way she truly should be honored? So, my words, this is called "The Heart of a Brilliant Educator." Full of life, laughter, and love, each day, gazing into the eyes of children as they arrive, welcoming them into a warm and comfortable classroom, an environment that reflects the thought and care placed into making her classroom her students' home. Each day, focusing on supporting, motivating, and challenging her students, so they strive to be the best third graders they can be, curious, thoughtful, respectful, and caring, kind, creative, imaginative, and articulate, mathematicians, readers, scientists, writers, thinkers, and problem solvers, positive citizens of their Moheramit classroom and school community. Each day, day by day, respectfully encouraging and creating independent and engaged learners, pictures in words inspiring the thoughts and vivid imaginations of young writers. Reading with flamboyant expression, digging deep to no characters, instilling a love of reading. Multiplying, dividing, polygons, fractions, math is everywhere, math is patterns, math is language. Researching and investigations, making connections, learning comes to life. Next page. Children smile and will remember, wax museums, picturing, writing, image-making Alice Island, the trouble with Jenny's ear, circumference, Axel Annie, brown bats, African drumming, fraction bar frío, pumpkins, maple syrup, Animals of New Hampshire, loons, turtles, folktales, biographies, and so much more. Each day, teaching and caring for the whole child, ownership, choice, passion, excitement. Decades of educating children, prioritizing the importance of what is real to her students. Everyday life, side by side with her kids. Each day, a role model and leader for her students and colleagues, always looking at the big picture, guiding with grace, articulating her philosophy and viewpoints with poise and truth, standing up and speaking out for all that is right for educators, and ultimately what is best for all children. Each day, we will always remember your gentle ways, we will always remember your honest and thoughtful perspective, we will always remember your strength and determination, we will always remember your hard work and dedication, we will always remember the love that radiates from the heart of a brilliant educator. Susan Obern.[1475.32][1475.32](APPLAUSE).
Next is Ann Shump, recognizing Sharon McManus.
Okay, what you just heard is what you get when you ask a teacher from Oyster River School District to speak. Sharon gets stuck with me.[1518.45][1518.45](LAUGHTER). I'm honored to have been asked to speak, to say a few words about Sharon. I was a little nervous about it, but when I was told I could only speak a minute, I thought, well, maybe I can handle this. Sharon's son and my son were in first grade together, and that's when I first met her as a parent. As many of you know, the friendships that we make when our children are young are the ones that last, seem to last the longest, for some reason. Then my son had her as a teacher for third and fourth grade, and I got to know her as a teacher. Sharon has worked in the Oyster River School District for as long as she's been teaching, which is a long time.[1556.22][1556.22](LAUGHTER). She taught at Oyster River Elementary for a few years, and then she was shifted up to seventh grade math. She's told me that at that time, there was only one math class in seventh grade, so anybody who went through seventh grade for those few years had Sharon. Eventually, she was able to move back to Oyster River Elementary School, and when Moheramit was built, she chose to move over here, unlucky us. Sharon has developed a writing program that's been very successful with her students called Empowering Young Writers. One of the things she focuses on is powerful words, so I thought I'd end this talk with some powerful words about Sharon. She's a mother, grandmother, she gets to focus on that here pretty soon, teacher, friend, reader, listener, she has a sense of humor, she's organized, she's strict.[1612.45][1612.45](LAUGHTER). She's curious, she's hardworking, sensible, she's proud of both her students, her son, and her granddaughter, and her friends. She's reflective, and last but not least, as of June 20th, you can add, retired.[1632.14][1632.14](LAUGHTER).
Thank you, Ann. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.[1637.14][1637.14](APPLAUSE).
So rather than as an introduction, I'll do this as a closure, Dennis.[1643.22][1643.22](LAUGHTER). So Susan started in 1981 as an elementary teacher, making $13,448 a year. And Brenda started in the district much later than the other two. I'm assuming she had a career before Oyster River?
Yeah.
Yeah. But her Oyster River salary, when she started in the year 2000 as a reading specialist, was $54,603. So we wish all of you the very, very best, and thank you for all the years of service to Oyster River children.[1680.11][1680.11](APPLAUSE).
I just wanted to say, my eyes aren't dry, and I just knew this all along about all of you individuals, but I just wanted to express how much better we are as a community, and how the world is a better place because of all the hard work and dedication that all of you have exhibited. You'll be greatly missed, and I thank you for all you've given to the children of our district.[1753.51][1753.51](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Seems anticlimactic to go on. Are there other board announcements and commendations? Denise?
I'll just mention that the Oyster River High School PTO-sponsored, "The Places Will Go," high school seniors talking about their years at Oyster River and their plans for the future. And if you missed it, I believe that it will be on our...
It'll be on Friday.
It'll be on Friday. Go," high school seniors talking about their years at Oyster River and their plans for the future. And if you missed it, I believe that it will be on our...
It'll be on Friday.
It'll be on Friday on the Oyster River TV station, which is 92, 95. So, I encourage people. It was very informative, and the kids, there was a large group of students, very impressive group of students, so check it out.
Others?
We should mention Megan Doody, who is the Foster's Indoor Runner of the Year, so one of our former board members, so congratulations to her. Hopefully, we can watch, all watch the epic battles between her and Hannah Parker coming up, so it'll be exciting to... So, are there other commendations? District reports, Assistant Superintendent?
This is the report I was talking about. This is just a quick update on where we are with Smarter Balanced. It's kind of a report in numbers. So, we just wanted to give, when will the testing be complete? We've been testing off and on across four buildings. We haven't tested all grades this entire time. We've mentioned before that we give a couple, an hour, hour and a half, two hours tops a day, but we're closing to the end, and we're pretty happy about that. So, by May 29th, all testing should be done in the district. Total number of refusals, we thought that this was something worth reporting. At the elementary level, there were four, middle school thirteen, high school thirty-seven. What went well? Every principal echoed that the technology was without flaw, it was excellent. We couldn't have asked for anything better our first time around, doing something completely new, entirely technology-dependent. So, that was echoed by everyone. And the students and teachers put forth so much effort into the preparation, but even to taking the assessment. Students put their best foot forward in taking the assessment, and we thank them for that. The kids handled themselves better than we thought, that was one of the comments from the principals. We wondered how they would do in an online environment and for a sustained period of time, and for the most part, they did really well. What also went well was the support, this is feedback I gathered from all the principals, from the IT Department, district, and fellow professionals, it was amazing. Things to think about for next year, as always, anytime you try something new, you need to reflect on what we'd like to think about and do a little differently now that we know. Scheduling testing earlier, you know, originally, we thought that by pushing things all the way to the end, it would give us more time, and I think in the initial year, that was good, the best decision we could have made. But knowing how the year goes, and when we get to this point in time, there's so much going on. So, to start a little earlier, to end earlier. More communication, we felt, with the community in hindsight. We felt that in some cases, decisions were being made, and information was gathered by the community more on media, and sometimes through Facebook or other venues, as opposed to what was directly coming from the district to help people make informed decisions and informed opinions about what was going on here in the district. More laptops, believe it or not, I almost hesitate to say that because we have so much technology, but more laptops so all students can test at the same time in the morning versus staggering in the afternoon. And with anything, more people and space to take the testing, and a continuity of testing administration. So, with anything, we think about the proctoring. How consistent were we, and depending on different classrooms and different groups of students, could we do a better job in thinking about how to be, I guess, more valid or reliable in our efforts to give the same experience to all our students? And then to reexamine our time allotment. Happily, we allotted more time than we needed. We actually took the estimated recommendation of time and put a schedule together with our best information and what we had, and in many cases, if not most, we had to, we had extra time that we put back into instruction, so we're happy to report that. But all in all, we're coming to a close in our first year administering the Smarter Balanced Assessment, and I don't know if any of the principals want to add comment. I think a couple do, but for the most part, we feel like we've kind of come through to the other side of things fairly well.
Everything Carolyn said, I echo 100%. I did want to, though, you noticed the refusal rate was fairly high at the high school. Thirty-seven students represents about 25% of the junior class, and I would say I've had conversations with just about every single parent that has exercised that right, and the reasons for it are pretty clear. Juniors in particular, May is a very stressful month assessment-wise. AP testing is going on, ACT testing, SAT testing. We also had the science kneecap, so for kids that were certainly the higher, the kids that were college aspirants, they experienced a lot of assessing in the span of that time, and so most of the refusals focused on that issue. There wasn't a whole lot of concern about Common Core or the test in and of itself, it was more a question of the time allotted to it. So, certainly, we have talked about the idea of possibly doing it earlier and so forth, and obviously, again, I think this speaks very strongly to our case for applying for the waiver to do SATs as the assessment at the high school, because right away, 95% of our kids are doing that anyway, and it's not adding another layer. So, certainly, it speaks to that, and I'm certainly hopeful that that will be the case moving forward, that we will get that waiver to be able to do that. But, I mean, again, testing went very smoothly, I cannot, I mean, for the 104 kids who came, their effort was fantastic, the proctors were well-prepared, but again, I think one of the things we have to be aware of is we have a 75% participation rate, and I don't know what the data is going to reflect, because again, you're talking about the refusals coming from that group that is a lot of our higher aspirant students, so it's going to skew the data. So, I would just simply want to point that out to you. Thanks.
Sarah?
Will we be ending, are kids going to continue to have to take the kneecaps? Because I would have to say, I'm a fourth grader, and she came home yesterday and said, today is the first day in a long time I'm not testing. She was so excited, and I was like, God, that is so sad! So, the kneecap was the one that I just felt like, God, can we cut them some slack somewhere?
So, the reason for the kneecap, it's only in science. So, the Common Core standards came out for math and ELA, and then they developed a different assessment to assess the different set of standards. We're still under the New Hampshire adopted science standards, which the science kneecap was developed on those original standards. There has been discussion about going to next-generation science, but that would require a new assessment, and we're waiting on a decision. So, in the interim, we're still required to assess the state-adopted science standards, and therefore, science kneecap is here.
And even if you went to the next-gen science, it sounds like there would be an assessment tagged to that anyway.
And in that case, science is assessed four, eight, and 11. So, that's how the testing falls.
I would add, Sarah, that last Thursday, the New Hampshire Senate entertained a bill, House Bill 323, which actually puts the SAT as the replacement test for Smarter Balanced, but also cut back on the number of tests that the students would be taking. I think the proposal is, grade three would be English Language Arts, and grade four math, and grade eight, and then grade 11. It ran into a Donnybrook last week with some Republican opposition. It's coming back up again tomorrow, so what I would encourage is anybody who's listening who wishes to contact a senator, it'd be great to do that tomorrow morning and say, please support House Bill 323 because the intent is just that. And, you know, whether it comes through wholly or impartial, we won't know until the Senate votes. So, it's already out of the House.
Kenny?
Just an off-the-cuff idea or suggestion, could we, as a school board, say that we support that and send a communication tomorrow morning that will come as representative of the Oyster River Cooperative School District that we support allowing our juniors to do that?
I mean, I could do that, it's going to be a telephone communication at best at this point, so, yeah, I mean, if the board wants to take a position that they support House Bill 323, then I will make that phone call on your behalf. I've already called in behalf of the superintendents.
I just think any public input is valuable, and coming from a school board of a school district that has a reputation that is favorable for quality of education, if it makes any difference, why not try it?
I move that we ask the superintendent to call our senator.
As an individual or as a representative of the board?
As a representative, I'm moving that the board...
To represent that the board supports 323?
Right.
Okay. Moved by Maria?
Well, can we do that now? Because aren't we still under, under Assistant Superintendent reports? I just don't know if this is the right time to do that.
There's a motion.
Oh, okay. It's okay. Okay, we can.
Moved by Maria. Is there a second?
And I would say not just, not to call our senator, because I know our senator is supportive, but maybe to call the kind of Senate leader, you know, that would be where the communication would be most important.
There's a motion.
I was trying to make a friendly amendment to your intention, and I'll second it.
Just, the opposition to this is from the Republican senators. The Democrats are almost uniformly...
Yes.
Almost uniformly on board, so that I think if, I don't know if you'd accept this as a friendly amendment, but Jim would communicate with the entire Republican group, is that, would that be a friendly amendment, or would you want to...
That would be fine with me.
Then I would make a phone call in the morning to Senate leadership, which would represent the Republicans because they're in the majority, and let them know that this school board supports House Bill 323, well, wait for the vote, but I assume it's going to be unanimously.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. All this in discussion? I think it's a good thing for us to do. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in affirmative, student rep in affirmative, so you're authorized to make that call on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Is there other? I'm sorry.
Jay had a comment he was going to make.
Okay, Jay, I'm sorry.
I could definitely not, but I figured, lucky me, of course, I get to test every single student in my school, all the grade levels. On the positive, I'm impressed by our students, I mean, in so many different ways, but when our kids do these assessments, like, you know, the Smarter Balanced, they work really hard, and they, even though they dislike the assessment, they want to give their best effort to make our school look good. And let me tell you, that makes me feel really good as a principal. An example, we have a student that has some medical challenges right now, and the mother got on the phone with me, and like, this student wanted to come to school to give his best effort to make the school look good. And you hear things like that about a student, it just, again, it's pretty special. I would echo what Carolyn says, that technology was seamless. It bothers me as principal, you know, when I'm in the hallways and I hear my kids talking about assessment, about Smarter Balanced, and now, right now, we're in the thick of doing the kneecap science, too. It's a lot, it really is. But my teachers did an exceptional job, they worked really hard, the preparation in terms of that went into it. I think we learned a great deal, so we won't nearly have to spend that amount of time next year. And a lot of the grumbles, too, were from our teachers, you know, our teachers do so much with technology now, and when we do do these assessments, you've heard it from me before, I don't want to freak Josh out, but I would love to have a laptop for every student so we could do it like we used to do it for the kneecaps, but I hear that a lot from our teachers, you know, we talked, I talked about writing earlier, a lot of our teachers are doing writing with laptops very frequently, so when we do this, we're moving the carts all over the school, and it definitely does impact what our students can do during that timeframe, but again, I was very impressed with the effort of our staff and teachers. And lastly, I must say, our tech integrator, Kathy Stetson, how invaluable she was, and I know she's been a resource for some of the other schools, too, the amount of energy and effort, I'm not talking about during the school day, but at night, creating information sheets for our teachers to make sure they were prepared the best they could be. Another example is Kathy gave out her cellphone number during the assessment, so any staff member that had a question or a concern during the testing would text Kathy, and she would hurriedly get to their classroom. I really probably should buy her roller skates, but just a couple of quick thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, to echo what the principals have said and what Carolyn has shared, I definitely agree, just speaking from a special ed perspective, I'm glad that you guys are supporting this initiative at the state because it really does impact our program for weeks. Our students have been great, but they are burnt out with the amount of assessment and it being hard, and at the risk and of us trying to redo their schedules so they make sure they get their services. Carolyn did lots of training with all of our proctors, so I can't thank her enough for being really flexible. We had lots of peer professionals proctoring, so we're really able to meet their needs individually. I did some individual proctoring with students myself, too, so I could be part of it and see how our students were doing. So, I think the schedule was great, the principal's support was great, I think we really did do the best we could for the kids, but the way this assessment has been structured, just given the amount of technology that's required, in addition to also, you know, fitting in science kneecaps, it's been really challenging for our students with disabilities in their services.
I have a question for Catherine. Often, not to stereotype students with disabilities, but sometimes students have certain routines that are very important for them. Was the disruption of routine something that you had to deal with?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and the other part of it, I mean, this happened with kneecaps, too, it seemed to be a little bit different because the assessments knew this year, but we have students who also take an alternative assessment. So, for those students, it also impacted, because we had scheduled these larger chunks of time, if you will, just because we weren't sure how it was going to go, but then we found out in some buildings that we didn't need as much time, but it has definitely impacted their schedules. They're not, they're used to going to this place at this time. We actually just shared that with a couple of families because we were sending home some notes, these are tough days, sorry for sending your home, your child home in a not great place, and it was really due to the routine and not being with their peers, because some of our students with significant disabilities really thrive off being with their friends during the day. So, that definitely played a role. But our staff was really great, and when they did end early, they were out in the halls, like, we're done, let's get our class going again, and I think they really tried to do the best they could.
I have to give an example that, even though I said ditto, I was in one of the classrooms today when it was going on, and kids finished well ahead of time, but what impressed me is how respectful of the kids who weren't finished, the kids who were finished were, they stayed silent, they did what the staff asked them to do, and everyone was able to do the best that they possibly could do.
Thank you, Dennis.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Carolyn.
I guess I do have a question for Mr. Todd. Looking forward to next year, could you imagine there might be a tipping point where students, you know, a certain percentage of students decide not to take it? It tips, so they decide, you know, the majority of the class might decide not to take it, or is that just a project?
Well, I mean, certainly, there is a dynamic there that the more it becomes known that large numbers of kids are refusing, and I, like, would you, it's not, there is no opting out, and it's refusing to take the test, and that is the language that's being used, we refuse to have our child participate, and as more and more people are doing it, it is harder and harder to get those that are doing it to take the test in a serious manner. So, I would have concerns for next year if I were told, do the same assessment in the same manner, in the same timeframe. I think it would be a potentially larger issue. I would say the students have been very reasonable. There was some chatter on their class Facebook page about staging, you know, a walkout or something like that to try to make a point about it in meeting with their class leadership. I talked to them, it's like, you know, that turns it into more of an adversarial thing between... it's like, you know, that turns it into more of an adversarial thing between you and I, and then it becomes me and you and a disciplinary issue in the school, if you really, and I would say, I'm very impressed, the kids who are, they have well reasoned, I've had so many conversations with kids about this, they're thinking, it's not because they're saying, "I want to avoid a test." I mean, these are kids that are really, are hard-driving kids. But in the end, they want to make a stand on principle, and I think it's, yeah, there is a critical point. I mean, I hope we get granted the SAT waiver, and then it would beg the question of, do we do this again next year, and if we do, how do we do it?
Thank you.
So I just want to bring, since Todd is still there, the point that he mentioned that is really critical for the board to understand, with 25% of the class not participating, next year's scores are going to be really not useful. But we knew that going in, even if all the kids participated, if the SAT does replace the stellar balance, that this year was just kind of the 11th grade going through the motions. So unfortunately, that's a hard fact. And it's the first year, and, you know, the parent refusals, as Todd has said, they've been very polite, they've been direct, and they're just saying, "No, I don't want this," and they've given good reasons. Carolyn's dealt with it, I've dealt with it, the principals have dealt with it. To a person, everybody's been very rational in their approaches. So, just so you know, the 11th grade scores next year, based on the number of kids who did not participate, won't be comparable to other high schools, because across the state, you've had different variations of kids participating.
And I would just throw in one thing, because I know in this community, it means something. The various rankings that get done, the News Weeks, the U.S. News and World Reports, they use standardized test data, and obviously, having a less than stellar performance on a standardized test that's being mandated by the state is a piece of data that we'll be using that. And so just be aware that, as long as this is the data point we're using, it's not going to reflect well on us as a whole. I mean, individually, it might still reflect well on individual kids, but as a whole school, it's not likely to be a good cross-section of what our kids are truly capable of.
Thank you, Todd.
Superintendent's report?
None tonight.
Mr. Chair? Business administrator? None. Student senate?
I don't have a lot to say, but it's almost the end of the year, and so everything, we have finals coming up soon and projects. So the senate, we're not doing a tremendous amount. We're working on running our elections for next year, and doing that at the high school level with, for reelections, and then going down to the middle school, and talking to the eighth graders about running for their class offices. And we're also planning ahead for next year's Spirit Week, and what we can do to make that a better experience for everyone.
Thank you very much. Denise?
Just a question about how the prom went. I did see in the article in the paper about some kids getting a free dinner, but just wondering how things went.
Yeah, I, it was last Thursday at the Red Barn in South Berwick. It was really beautiful, it was really well done, and I know everybody that I talked to, and I included, had a lot of fun. And I applaud the junior class for putting that all together, and all the teachers and administration who came, chaperoned and helped make it what it was.
Questions? Okay, so we move to discussion items. We have the board goals before you for the 2015, 2016. We have options of approving them as a group, although Maria has an amendment, I believe, to...
Goal three?
Three.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think three needs, if we, you know, we could vote for all but three, unless somebody else wants to pull something for discussion. Denise?
Yes, it would be six that I have, just some additional information I'd like to see included, so.
Okay, so if we, so three and six, we'd like to discuss individually. Are there any others that, no? Kenny?
So I'll move that we approve board goals one, two, four, five, and seven, as listed. Do we need to read the goals?
I don't think so. Okay, so just, could you just say those again, one?
One, two, four, five, and seven.
Okay. Moved by Kenny to approve those as a block. Is there a second? Seconded by Denise. The discussion, hearing none. Could we approve that those five be approved as a block? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in the affirmative, student rep in the affirmative?
Yes.
I'm stating, okay, fine. Okay, so if we go to three, then, Maria, would you like to make your amendment?
Yes, I would. And I've written writings to make it easier. Because I find it difficult to have a goal that is supposed to promote another goal. So my amendment would read, "To achieve a successful vote on a bond issue in March of 2016, to fund an upgrade of existing fields, addressing safety and drainage concerns, and to add a track. The project will include an artificial turf field constructed with materials that exclude tire chrome rubber." And if there's a second, I'd like to speak to my amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Sarah. Can you speak to it?
Yes, I think to pass this bond issue is an educational project, and the education can start right now by outlining, of course, what it is we want to do, to upgrade existing fields and addressing safety and drainage. That makes it clear to the community. Now, when it comes to the artificial turf field and constructed with materials that exclude tire chrome rubber, as late as last night, CBS had investigative report on the concerns that are growing across the country regarding chrome rubber. Do I know that chrome rubber is bad for you? No, because every study I've read says further testing needs to be done. I hope it's good for you, since so many students are already on it. But on the other hand, the concerns are growing. Long Island just put a moratorium. Several countries in Europe have banned them. And for me to vote, to go ahead with something that so many people and so many scientists are concerned about, I'm not a risk taker particularly, so I'd go with something that I know is safe. Obviously, we could also put it off for five years until the studies are done, and then maybe we could go ahead with chrome rubber as a cheaper alternative. But since I want it in March of 16, I would certainly go with something that does not carry the concerns that the Health Department of California are doing a major study on. I think Yale University just got funding to study this as well. It took 30 years for the scientists to decide that smoking was actually really bad for you. In the meantime, those that chose to smoke took the risks. I don't jump out of airplanes, I don't ride motorcycles either. I'm kind of a safe kind of person. Therefore, I have made this amendment.
Denise, is there a question?
Al can go first and then.
Okay.
So I really appreciate, you know, the concern about both student health and the environment, and I think it's, you know, paramount as it goes forward. My problem is, is that we've formed a committee, the committee is studying this, and the committee's then going to come up with, I think, what I really, again, I thought it was really well done, how Jim did it, the best possible package to go forward. So when I'm looking at this, rather than saying, you know, "No, I don't want to use chrome rubber," I would rather that we come forward and say, "We're using this material, we've had this set of criteria, and this material best fits it." And I think, you know, Swamp Scott did that, and as you begin to come through a criteria, one that scientifically is clearly shown, is heat retention of infield material. So when you begin to do that, and like, G-Max, which is like a cushioning, and you put all that in a solid, you know, framework, and then you compare all the things, a best thing does actually rise to the surface. In their case, they use like a silica material that's encapsulated, and I cannot for the life of me remember the name of it. But it sets you up as a best way then to go to the community and say, we didn't just say, "No, we aren't sure if this material is harmful or not harmful, but this is the best material that meets our needs," which I think is a higher standard. And so it sets you up as you go forward then to say to the community, "This is why we picked this material. It may cost a little bit more money, but it meets all the criteria for the best fit." So it feels to me like we're rushing and skipping a step. I would prefer to let the committee work its way through. It's a diverse committee that will investigate it, that will then build the best case for us to go forward. I know there's like, when something fails, you really want to dive right in, but it's a red flag for me when you do that. I'd rather take a little bit of time and come up with the most comprehensive plan that we're able to then work forward. And I think the framework that we've put in place is a really, really good way to do that, and it sets us up then to go to the community, I think, with the best possible thing. So while I appreciate everything said, I just can't support it as stated.
Denise?
Thank you. Yes, I also appreciate the concern, absolutely, but I agree with Al completely. As we know in this district, if we start out saying right off the bat, "We're not going to look at this," by the time we come to the vote, people are going to say, "Why didn't you look at this? What about the cost? There won't be any comparison." I agree. I think it's premature to exclude anything at this point. I completely agree with Al. We have a committee. I trust this committee is going to do extensive work to research different materials. For all I know, I haven't heard about any other materials, maybe they're more dangerous, I don't know that. I'm willing to trust this committee, as Al said, to come up with the best solution for our district. And I agree, I think that would give us the best chance with the voters to say, "We looked at all of these, and looked at the pros and cons of each one, and this is why we're choosing this particular info."
Sarah?
I would love if we could hold off voting on this one until the next meeting. I feel like I just got this amendment now, and I don't want to vote on it now. I want to be able to go home and think about it, and work it through my brain, and because I feel, I understand the reasoning for it, I also understand the idea, do we want to get ourselves in a spot where we've absolutely committed at this point to no tire chrome rubber? I may want to be at that point, I'm not sure. And I guess I would ask that we hold off on voting on this one goal till the next meeting, so I can think about it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. I make a motion to hold off on...
Now, would that be a motion to table?
Not to table.
Just postpone, okay.
I make a motion to postpone goal number three, voting on goal number three, until the next meeting. Jim, the date of that, do you have a calendar, anyone?
June 3rd. June 3rd.
June 3rd.
Second?
Till the June 3rd meeting.
It's moved and seconded to postpone the consideration of goal number three until June 3rd. Discussion on that, Kenny?
And not to be, I guess I can't separate the discussion just of this and the original motion, but again, I appreciate your intent in the original amendment. My feeling is that I'm confident in the process, and I feel we should really trust the process. And I feel that we have, Dr. Morse has put together a group of individuals, and I think that we should really respect the integrity of their work. We will have final say, it will come before the board, but I feel that we shouldn't be inhibiting their work, and I fully trust that process. And so in saying that, I also feel that I would not favor postponing a vote on it, because that process is moving forward as we speak, and I would want that work to continue.
Sarah?
I agree, I don't want it to stall the work. I don't feel that it would stall the work to change this from two weeks from now. I feel that they're on a great trajectory, great go-for-it, they continue to work on what they're working on, and I just feel that to give us two more weeks, we've just seen it tonight, would be fair.
Al?
I agree, I think it's, you know, there's no super rush. Again, one of my red flags, I just said, I don't like high-pressure decisions that you have to make spontaneously with little information. It's like, always better to let it marinate a little and think it through, and so I really can't see any downside to Sarah's table.
Postponing.
They're postponing, excuse me. Get her, right.
So I'll start by saying I feel like I agree with Al. I think this is a big issue. I feel like it's an issue that we're headed toward anyway, and I agree with a lot of the sentiments about the process. And that, I think we've seen some recent examples in this community where we've gone out to the community with some well-reasoned but foregone conclusions, and without that due diligence of process that really is all-encompassing, I feel as though we may be selling this process short, and I don't know that we can afford that, given the stage we're at and the urgency with which the field solution is needed. So, and I also agree with the point that Maria's made several times, in terms of the urgency of our action on this. That would be my only reluctance for waiting a couple of weeks, but I don't see how that holds up the work of the committee, which I think is the most important thing. So I would, again, be okay with waiting a couple of weeks.
Is there other discussion on postponing action? Maria?
I guess I've heard the discussion about the committee working, you know, diligently. I happen to know a member of the committee on, and it's been three weeks now, nothing has happened. No meetings have been scheduled. I know there is a communication committee scheduled, but nothing else has happened. And in my opinion, you know, time is short, it really is. Education takes time and effort, and a teacher that's there smiling every morning, and this is not that different. So a decision, the sooner, the better. And in my opinion, the goal needs to be more specific, so that it is an educational tool, whether or not the last sentence is taken out of there or not. I also think it's important to take what we know is divisive out of there, so, because we want a successful vote on a bond issue in March. How do you do that? You take out the divisiveness, and you take out, and you educate, and you have a committee that meets more often than what has been happening. So.
I don't know what's happening as far as the committee meeting, but as far as divisiveness, for some people, the dollar amount would be the divisive factor, not the material. So I hear, you know, again, I think, I'm fine with postponing the vote. I agree that waiting two weeks, I'm presuming... I agree that waiting two weeks, I'm presuming that the committee is moving forward. I would hope that the committee is moving forward certainly in doing the work, and I don't have an issue with waiting two weeks to do a vote.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone? All those in favor of postponing action on Article 3 as amended? Please raise your hand. All those opposed? Six in favor, one opposed. Motion carries, so this will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Now there is, there's, is it six?
Yeah.
Okay. And Denise, you had some...
Yeah, that was mine, and I'm not really sure that I'm looking at... Amending what's here. What I did do, and I apologize, I did not make copies for everybody. I just wanted to emphasize again, these are the same information that I would be seeking for the later start time, which is 6E. And this, these are some of the same things that I mentioned before, but I will say them again. It's fine, I think the way it's worded is to continue to investigate the feasibility of a later start time for the middle school and the high school. I would definitely like information, I do have a copy for Laura, that says a list of start times and locations for all the sports games/meets for both the high school and middle school for this year, the 2014-15 school year. And that, my reason for wanting to gather that information is to show how a later start time would impact all the various sports that we have. We have a complete list of, you know, the track meet was at this time at this location, the tennis meet was here, golf was there, et cetera, et cetera. So that's one piece of information I would be looking for. I mentioned before, and again, a survey of all staff members, asking about the impact of a change in start/dismissal, because it's not just start time that's impacted, but dismissal, for them both personally, in terms of their family obligations and whatever, and professionally in terms of how they feel that would impact their teaching and their classes and so forth. And the third thing is a survey of our comparison school districts to determine what their start and dismissal times are for all schools within the district. Again, not just a high school or a middle school, because, you know, we're really looking at the times for all our schools. So I would like to look at our comparison schools...
The comparison districts, you mean?
Yeah, the comparison, right, yeah, comparison school districts, exactly. The schools within the comparison school districts. And that's not an exhaustive list of information, obviously, that I think we need for this, but those are three pieces that, for me, are really important. So I just want to make sure that we gather that information as we move forward with that one.
Can I make a suggestion? I wonder if we extend the goal to say to include but not be limited to, and add each of, because I would think each of those three things would be part of feasibility.
Sure.
Okay. So would you want her to read those again, or are we ready to...
I do have a copy for Laura, and I have one other one that I'm going to just give to Jim here and...
So just maybe to summarize, the first one is like...
It's a list of start times and locations for all sports.
Sports.
Games and meets.
Okay. The second was...
A survey of all staff members.
Okay.
And the third is a survey of our comparison school districts.
Okay. So if we had to include but not be limited to, and make sure that those three elements are part of that, would that be, so, would you want to move to have it amended in that way?
Yes, I will move to amend it, as I just stated.
Okay.
Tom, could I add one?
Sure.
I think what's missing on the list is to form a staff committee, not just to survey the staff, and it should be a K through 12 staff committee to discuss the issue from a K through 12 perspective.
Okay. So was that as a fourth? Okay.
But did you just say you'd only have staff from 8 through 12? Because it's...
K through 12.
Oh, K through 12, okay.
K through 12. So to form a staff committee, to survey staff, to look at comparison school districts, and to look at athletic start times?
Yes.
Okay? But not be limited to that?
Not be limited to that at all. Obviously, there's more information, but those are just, to me, some key things I would want to see before I made a decision.
Okay, so the, as amended, would be to continue to investigate the feasibility of a later start time for Oyster River Middle School and High School, to include but not be limited to those four. Is that clear to everybody? Is that...
Do we have a second?
Okay, so will you want to make that motion, then we'll see if we have a...
Yes, I just make that motion.
Okay, seconded by Al. Is there discussion on the motion as amended? So we're moving goal six as amended by, with those additions, those four items that we want as part of it. Are we ready to vote on that? Okay. All those in favor of goal six as amended, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in a favor. So goal six passes, so we've passed, approved all goals, but goal three, which will be considered at the next meeting. Kenny?
And then I didn't know how to handle it, and whether other people support handling it, but I didn't know if it was reasonable to put a statement in, although not at the level of the seven school board goals that are to be approved, it should be noted that the school board also places priority on furthering the Oyster River Community School District's work in the area of sustainability, with possible areas to explore, including alternative energy sources and decreasing the automobile use of students and parents. We would also like to see the start of an investigation into the feasibility of enhancing our language program, both in the breadth of languages offered and in an earlier beginning to the program. So not to have them as board goals, but just a statement, I don't...
Kenny, it's in the record though, now, right, or in the minutes? Do you want more than that?
Well, I guess if the board would need to agree that these are, that other people agree with what I said.
Do you have a copy of that?
I do.
I guess I'm trying to figure out what kind of motion you're making.
And that's, I don't know either, because I know that we do have quite a few goals, and these might not at this time rise to the level of them, but I do think that there are areas that discussion should start. So I'd like to be encouraging Sustainability Committee, I'd like to encourage a group of, whether it's teachers, parents, administrators, to look at our language offerings. So I just wanted to somehow get that kickstart.
Could I just make a suggestion that we, just as a, I don't know whether you have to have a vote, but to see that those issues be on some future agenda, so that, you know, we can discuss them and then see whether we want to take action on them, rather than to kind of have them as kind of a, kind of a, sort of a goal, you know? Is to have a kind of, because I think foreign language and sustainability are things we need to talk about, environment we need to talk about. So whether we would have those on a future agenda, as opposed to having them as a kind of goal.
I didn't know how to handle it, I just was raising it.
Just a question, aren't these thoughts and issues incorporated in the strategic plan already? Sustainability certainly is.
Yeah, I get a little confused, to be honest with you, and I don't mean to be facetious at all, because I don't know, I mean, Kenny's thoughts are very well spoken, but they do rise to the level of a lot of work, which is why we try to get the board to focus on the goals that we did. You know, I think about the way that Kenny, you worded that whole piece on sustainability, and then Tom suggested it come back as a discussion item at some point in the future, would require sustained effort on our part to be able to give you a credible report. The foreign language piece, when we were talking in our workshop, we thought might be able to be handled by inviting Middlebury in, because they do have an outreach program to talk about what they see as a possibility in the district. So that one, I could see how I could move the ball, but the way that you worded the sustainability one, it seems as big as the other six.
I was thinking, and I appreciate that, and it's why I really didn't know how to handle them. With the sustainability one, I thought we do have a Sustainability Committee that has a generous membership, and the way we task committees with kind of our goals and kind of things we would like them to explore, that it's almost a reinforcing charge, just to kind of recommit ourselves to sustainability and say, "And by the way, these are two things we thought of, could you maybe investigate and use that body perhaps as the explorative body, rather than taking your time and your staff's time?" I don't know if that would work, but that was my thought.
Could I just say something?
True.
I'm wondering whether that could be then a charge, because I think we have to clarify the committee language, and then whether that could be part of a charge to the committee, or we, you know, because it seems like that's kind of what you're talking about.
Yes.
So whether that could be handled as a charge to the Sustainability Committee, and then maybe we could talk to them about how they might, the representative might talk about how they might do that. Does that sound...
That would be fine. And I'm sorry, I just, the ideas I thought were important, and I didn't know where they should get flushed out.
Sarah?
Yeah, and I was going to say, I mean, the green team leaders also are a fantastic resource for that. I know just the Masway initiatives that I've heard about, and I'm sure Mo Hareman at the middle school and the high school all have similar initiatives going on with their green team leaders, and maybe an idea would be to have a report from the green team leaders at some point, or the Sustainability Committee, about what the green team leaders have been doing. Would be fantastic.
So perhaps if Dr. Morse might just explore, like with Middlebury, just, you know, not to make it a huge task, but if that could, you know, get some information about how, some models that they might be using, and then for the other, the second issue is sustainability, to incorporate that as a charge, and maybe have the Sustainability come back to report to us on how they might go forward with that charge. Would that seem responsive?
Kenny, do you have that language written out, so I could talk to the Sustainability Committee about it?
I do, yeah.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to the copier. Because I think we're done. So we have a motion for a five, we need a motion for, to approve a five-year copier lease?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, Josh, I have to say, took the lead on this, did a lot of work, extensive work, and come up with a great solution for the district, and we need an approval from the board, because it's a five-year lease. Questions? Josh is here.
I just have one. So when you get the 45, this strikes me, it's kind of similar to when we did the computers, you know, because they were all over the place.
Exactly the same.
But, so when you get the 45 new lease printers, then does that mean you retire the 45 that are...
Yeah, everything, anything that has any value, the company that we're going to be working with is going to, they have buyers, so they'll try to resell it, but the age of the equipment, we're not talking a lot of money, and then also, several years ago, there were some news reports that came out about what's stored on the hard drives of copiers, and how much sensitive data's on there. So that's a, we have to pay for someone to come and erase the hard drives. So we'll be paying to wipe our data, and then we'll get a small amount of money for the equipment, so, and then they'll get either repurposed, recycled. They have a e-steward type company that figures out, I mean, some of the equipment's so old, it's, you know, they, retirement is the correct term. But yes, exactly the same, multiple vendors, multiple costs. We have, just to order toner, we have three different companies we work with, and then if you look at a school, there could be anywhere from, I think we probably have district-wide 10 or 12 different fees per print, depending on the model of the copier. So this will narrow it all down, so everything is the same cost consistency across the district.
And I hate to bring this up, because it never works at my house, but is it possible to like, like with wire, it really doesn't. It's like, you can wirelessly do stuff or whatever, so it goes to one central location?
Yeah, we do that currently. We have a print server, and it monitors and manages everything, and then when we need printers on computers, we can push the printer to anybody's computer, so we...
So Al, if I could pick up that question and just say that the recommendation to reduce the number of devices from over 100 to 45 will cause consequences, not unintended consequences, intended consequences, because what we have now is this distribution of printers and copiers and so forth, sometimes in people's classrooms, sometimes very convenient to them, where they don't have to go very far. The model we're recommending is the model we use in the central office, where it's centralized printing, we all get up out of our seat and go to the printer and pick up our stuff and bring it back. The advantage to that model is often, things are sent to the copier in our schools, but never picked up. So what will happen in this model is, at midnight, anything that's in the queue will be wiped out, so we won't be copying, because somebody sent something to the printer and forgot about it. The other advantage to this is that Josh is going to institute a code system, so that things aren't printed to printers, copiers, that are private, you know, special ed reports. So the way that would work is the special educator would send the report to the copier, and they physically have to go and enter their code for it to print out, so they can collect it, so it's not the hallway routine, it's not a closet routine, it's not a common space. So you may, as board members, get some complaints from staff that these printers are disappearing. The difference in cost between an inject printer, a laser printer, and a copier is phenomenally different, and in some cases, we're paying for a color print that's costing us 30 cents versus costing us a third of a cent. So this whole process is really to create a more efficient printing distribution network through the district. Josh has worked tirelessly with the four principals to make sure that we're putting these copiers in locations that are convenient to staff, as opposed to, for the high school as an example, the major printing area is down on the first floor, down by Todd's office. So if you're on the third floor of the high school, you literally are coming down three floors, going, walking down the length of a hallway to get to the copier. In the model that Josh has worked out with Todd, the third floor would have a copier less powerful than the one we're using now. The second floor would have a copier, the first floor would have a copier, the UA area would have a copier, but they don't need to be these mega machines, and there would be, you know, dedicated floor space. So teachers will still have to go to the copier, but they only have to go to the copier on their floor. He's worked with Jay, he's worked with Dennis, he's worked with Carrie, to make sure that the distribution of these machines is rational. So, you know, you may get some pushback, because inject printers will become dinosaurs in the district, and we're literally going to pull them all as they die their history. So just that's, just so, you know, sometimes we do these reports, and I get chastised for not giving you the full picture. I'm trying to give you the full picture tonight, so. This is a really good thing we're doing. It's a far more cost-effective model, even though initially it cost us more, over time it'll cost us less, because we do anticipate more rational printing.
Sarah?
That all sounds great. Glad we have such people involved. But will people, so you've taken out these big fancy machines from certain places, if someone needs to print something of really high quality, not every day, but for some instance, will they have a printer somewhere within the district that they can get that done?
In every building.
Yep, we've really, the current company we use did a lot of things, like at the high school, they just put two huge machines right next to each other. And we haven't reduced the quality of the printing. Oh, they're actually probably much better quality printers than what we currently have. We just got smaller units and distributed them around the building a little bit better.
Great, thank you.
Kenny?
So just to add a little levity, and then I'll make a motion. So even though this goes against our staff wellness policy, because people are not going to be walking up and down three flights of stairs multiple times, I do put forward that we approve the five-year copier lease as outlined for our school district.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Is there further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your work. Denise? By policy, we're required to approve the handbooks for the four schools. I couldn't, it seems like they're minimal changes, is that correct?
Pretty much dates, just the date.
Come up one at a time, guys.
Yeah.
Sorry, like the middle school, they're really, we just go in, change the dates if there's been any staffing changes, so there really has been no significant, there hasn't been any rule changes or anything put in there that you really should be aware of. Just again, if, last year when I hired a new librarian, I needed to change the librarian's name... name, and of course, you know, next year is 2015, 2016, so.
Okay.
Just those kind of typical changes.
So.
Carrie?
Same, same. I think speaking for elementary, it's the same thing, just name changes if necessary and dates if necessary as well.
Okay.
Same here.
Okay, great.
I'll muddy the waters, because we did make a couple of changes. You, we have worked with the Student Senate revising the open campus policy, so there's a tighter policy around how you earn the privilege and how you maintain the privilege, and you can certainly read it in the handbook. The other thing, because there've been a number of board policy changes specifically regards to things like search and seizure and stuff like that, we did go through and make sure our policies match what the board's current policies are, so there was that. And then there was one change that's not reflected, because we're still working on it, and the master schedule, the timeframes for periods is gonna change, because we're starting a new advisory program next year, and it's gonna necessitate some shifting around, but obviously, there will be a master schedule, it just won't be exactly like what's in there.
Okay. Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the four school handbooks.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Dan. Further discussion? Maria?
Besides tar crumbs, one of my pet peeves in my life is when we keep saying free and reduced lunch or breakfast. It isn't the lunch that's reduced, we don't serve tiny little lunches, it's the price. And some of the handbooks still reflect tiny little lunches for some kids.
Administration, can you make sure this year that we go to free and reduced prices? The word prices is what's missing.
Cost.
Cost.
Okay.
Costs, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Maybe we can take that one off the table for you, Maria.
I don't know if that's an amendment, but I think, I think we could just take that in the spirit of, would that be correct, just to, please should just be looking at that, okay? So we have a motion, I think we have a second, right? Okay. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor approving the handbooks as revised, please raise your hands, seven in favor, student rep in favor. Okay, we need a motion to approve the last day of school, which I think was the June 19th. Is that right? Okay.
I'd like to motion to make Friday, June 19th as the last day of school, and it's a full day.
Okay.
According to this.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Discussion? All those in favor?
Discussion. I, I.
Why?
That's a Friday, I think kids have, should be going to school on Monday, you know? We saw that with the Sanco de Mayo, they gave them that whole weekend off, and look what happened. Curious, it's usually, the last day of school's been a half-day, and this year a full day, so it's one day.
It's a good question, Kenny, and we investigated that. And during the time that we had half-day workshops, it was a half-day, and then we went to full-day workshops, and to be quite honest with you, one year it was half-day, the next year it was full-day. So since we've gone to full-day workshops, we've been totally inconsistent. So that's the research that we did. I called the four principals, they all, they all remembered it slightly different, but in the end, we were able to figure out that's why it was slightly different, but everybody's memory was a little bit off.
And are this schools, the principal's staff supportive of this?
Well, I think that the staff would love to have a half-day. I think the principals wouldn't mind a half-day either, but.
And the kids.
Yeah, and the kids. But, you know, that would be a board decision. And if you make it, then we'll just be consistent with it in the future, we've just been inconsistent.
So I'm sorry, so it's a board decision whether it's a half-day or a full-day?
Yeah, it's a calendar issue. It would require, I mean, require a proactive, because the day was scheduled and published as a full day, so if you're going to make it a half-day, you'd have to make it a motion to make it a half-day. Go ahead, Sarah.
I'm like imagining my children looking at the calendar right now. So my question, so do we not need it for the hours?
Hours, we need the instructional time, guys.
Because of the test.
Well, I mean, do we need, you know, if teachers can use that day even to the social advantage of our children, I say I'm fine keeping it as a full day, if that is not going to be.
Well, we are running an hourly year now, so the hours matter. Is that two hours gonna make a difference? I don't know, Carolyn, you're the hour person, I imagine that it probably doesn't make a difference, two hours? Yeah.
I think, I think the more we, you know, if we go from, we have a calendar, we were looking at days, so it didn't matter if we had a delayed start, it still counts as a day, but by the state's minimum school, public school approval, we have a requirement of a minimal amount of instructional hours per year, and when we start tallying up the delays and losses, snow days, and where before we said, ah, delay still counts as a school day, because we serve lunch, now, a day is not a day, it's more hours in instructional time. So we could say, just, you know, no worries, but we do, like Jim said, we do look at instructional hours per our minimum school, public school approval. So we look at, even kindergarten has minimum hours, and elementary, and then high school, so there's differences among the different amount of hours, and I think if we, we aren't really diligent about clocking all these hours, but when we get too far into number of delays, we can almost equate the number of delays to another school day, but we didn't, you know, we looked, so we kinda.
Well, it is, in terms of the morning kindergarten.
Yeah, they've lost significantly.
They've lost over a day, and it more than the upper grades, so.
And they would lose another day if we went to a big day.
Well, they would lose the afternoon, the afternoon slot hasn't been impacted, it's the morning.
Morning would be fine, but the afternoon would be impacted.
The kids that lost was.
Denise?
Well, I just, it was interesting, these parents said, this is gonna come up, I was like, you know this is gonna come up on our agenda, I didn't even know that, it's important to her. But she was actually in favor of the full day, and again, it has to do with schedules, and we just heard about how testing was so disruptive to people's routines and schedules. I think particularly we're hearing, you know, we've lost some instructional time due to smarter balance, so I, I think we should leave it as a full day.
Yeah, I would support that.
Yeah, I had heard that I was gonna hear about it, and I did not hear about it from one person, so I'm assuming that it wasn't such a big deal for people.
Also, kindergarten usually ends the day before, on Thursday, just FYI.
And the really good news is that my junior doesn't watch ninety-six.
So I'm not hearing any motion to change it from full day, Tom, so.
So the motion is to approve, the motion is to approve the full day, the request?
Yes.
And that's been seconded?
Yes.
There's been no amendment, nobody's put in amendment on that. So all those in favor of, June 19th is the last day, and that being a full day, please raise your hands. Seven in favor.
Just want to note, the student voted in favor.
I have final set down.
We just know who to call.
Okay, then we have, let's see, we have to approve resignations, sadly approve the resignation of Rebecca Yerkes from Massway School, could I have a motion to approve that resignation? Kenny?
With great thanks to these two professionals, and I'll link them, motion to approve a Massway teacher resignation for the 2015-16 school year, as well as an Oyster River High School teacher for that same period, and thank you for the years of service.
Okay, so those two are combined in that motion, is there a second? Al?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Sarah?
I just wanna thank Rebecca Yerkes. My middle child had her, and she's a phenomenal educator, and best of luck to her.
Al?
I just wanna say, Kathleen Young, because I've spent a lot of time at the OR TV, watching her work with those kids, and it was really amazing watching them start where they couldn't even use the camera to what they produced at the end, so it was really spectacular, and I'm sure she'll do a great job going to the Museum of Science.
So, so we haven't voted on this one, right?
Right. Looking for a vote, Tom.
Okay, all those in favor approving these two resignations, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Okay, we have a motion to approve the hiring of a fourth-grade teacher at Muharramette. Could I have a motion to accept that, to approve that? Kenny?
I move that we approve the fourth-grade teacher for Muharramette, Michelle Fitzpatrick.
Moved by Kenny, is there a second? Seconded by Denise. Is there discussion on this? Hearing that, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Okay, that motion is approved, there's a, could I have a motion to approve the Oyster River High School phys ed teacher for 2015-16 school year? Maria?
Some moved.
Some moved, okay. Second? Seconded by Kenny. Is there discussion on that? Denise?
I'd just say it's very exciting that people that were classmates of my son are now going to be teachers.
Generation.
It's true.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Okay, we've already voted on the last day of school, so we have a motion for policies.
I've got it.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion for the following policies for first read, to accept the following policies for first read, BBAA, BDF, JLCF, IHCD, and IK.
Okay, I still have a question about policy BBAA, so I'm wondering if that could be separate?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, so we, does anybody else wanna pull one of these to discuss? Okay.
Well, I just.
I'm sorry.
I had one that I just needed to make a slight change to, but I think we can do that within the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, did you make a motion to approve all these?
Yes, but I'm fine to pull out BBAA if you want.
Okay, maybe could you withdraw the motion, and then state just?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so I move to accept the following policies for first read, BDF, JLCF, IHCD, and IK.
Okay, moved by Denise to approve these four policies as a block, is there a second? Seconded by Al. Discussion on these four, Denise?
Yes, there's, I believe there's a slight correction to policy BDF, on the, at the very, the very last sentence, this policy will be reviewed by the board, and, and then all standing advisory committees annually was crossed out, and for this, we did cross it out of BBAA, but for this policy, that, I believe that should have been kept in, and the only part that should have been crossed out was before the end of April. And the reason that we crossed out before the end of April is that some of the standing committees don't meet until after the end of April for the first time, so that was the intent, to just cross out before the end of April, but to keep the rest of the sentence.
Okay, so that, that could be changed between now and the final reading, the second reading. Okay, for, and maybe I'm being too picky on BBAA, but.
You don't have a motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, okay. So could we have a motion to approve those four policies as a block, I'm sorry about that?
She made a motion.
Second, okay. Discussion on these four? Okay, all those in favor approving these four as a block? Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Okay, for BBAA, I just wanna raise the question that I have with that. It seems to me that sometimes we have subcommittees that do actions, that sustainability, for example, may create a composting center in the high school, I think they did.
That's not a subcommittee.
Well, I'm not quite clear what, what kind of committee it is then. If the sustainability is not a subcommittee, what, what is our relationship to that committee? Because then, then it becomes kind of a phantom committee, I don't see anything in the policy about that kind of committee.
It's an advisory committee to the board, like ABC was, and so.
Okay, then if it's an advisory committee, it's, it's still doing something, okay? Whatever, if we're gonna call it an advisory committee, it's still doing something. It's not just advising us about making a decision, say like the long-range planning committee does, okay? For example, if, if, say, the 68 Hours of Hunger Committee wants to hold a silent auction to raise money for, to buy food for school, typically, they do it, because it's within their charge. We don't, it's clearly an action, right?
Right.
And it's not an action that we approve prior to them doing it, it's an action that we accept them to do, allow them to do, encourage them to want them to do, because it's part of their charge. Now, the way this policy still is written as revised, seems to suggest, at least to me, that all actions of either subcommittees or advisor committees are pre-approved by the board, right? So, so I still think that you're, you have committees, whether, and it's, it's not advisory committees, and it seems to me like sustainability is not really almost an advisory committee, it's a committee we authorize to do certain things in the, in the schools. And as long as they are operating within their charge, it seems to me that's what we want them to do. So I'm wondering whether we need some language, like, subcommittees may, although.
So there's no language here that's addressing the advisory committee?
We have to do it in both policies.
Yeah.
So we'll have to do, add this language to both policies, because the second one is what really more deals with advisory committees.
Okay.
So we'll have to really, and we reapproved the first read, but we can bring it back.
So I'm, yes, I think Kenny's absolutely right, Tom, I think that the issue is in the advisory committees to the board.
Okay.
The subcommittees wouldn't do anything outside of what the board has asked them to do, an advisory committee, you're giving a more broad discretion within the charge that you give them, so that 68 Hours of Hunger can do fundraisers without coming up and saying, can we do a fundraiser? So I think it's in the charge language.
Yeah.
And it is in the advisory committee to the board that the, the issue really comes front and center.
Yeah, it seems to me that when you have like six, commit, you know, if 68 Hours of Hunger is an advisory committee, and it doesn't really sound like, you know, it doesn't really sound to me like an advisory committee, it sounds to me like a committee that really goes out and does a certain kind of work that we charge it to do, but I think there needs to be some language that, or are there, that are, you know, that actions approved by the board, or that are consistent with the board's charge to the committee. Something like that needs to go into the policies, otherwise.
In which one?
In both, I think, Maria, and I, the language I thought of, Tom, if you're okay with it, subcommittees may also take action that have previously, that have been previously authorized by the full board, or that are inherent in their charge. And we'll put that in.
I would put or, I'd put and, and are.
And are, okay.
Mm-hmm. That's, I think that would do it.
And we'll put that in the sub, in the advisory one, too, because there's nothing about action in an advisory committee.
Can we repeat that, and that's gonna go in both the school board member authority and the advisory committee to the board? Both of them? Can you repeat?
Well, I think we're having a discussion, but.
Maria?
I think we have to remember that there is a huge difference between a subcommittee and an advisory committee, in the sense that there are three board members on an advisory committee.
Up to. I'm sorry.
Or up to.
Yeah.
But there aren't community members, and whatever, and I remember you saying that communications, for instance, is very important, because it put a face to what we're doing. Well, I like my face, too.
Your face is great.
And to have three board members at any time, setting the face without.
I know.
Me getting some of my genes in there, so to speak, is a different kettle of fish. So, therefore, in my opinion, the subcommittee has a much tighter envelope than the advisory committees that are wonderful, community members wanting to do work for the district. So.
Well, I think, from my standpoint, it gives a.
committees that are wonderful, community members wanting to do work for the district.
Well, I think, from my standpoint, it gives a question, like, if we charge the, say we charge the communications committee to help build support for, and, 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 help build support and convey information about the, the value of all-day kindergarten, for example. Say that would, just hypothetically, if that would be a charge, they might take actions like setting up a set of forums. Now, the question I would have is, do we have to authorize every action that the communications committee takes, or if that action is within their charge, whether that is sufficient? See, I think, I think that's, that's the kind of thing that we're kind of, I'm kind of wrestling with now. Al?
Actually, I, I talked to Barrett Christina, the New Hampshire School Board attorney about that. So you could, in the charge, really, I, I think with communications per se, it's mainly working with the superintendent. So if you, what you really do is authorizing the, like, for them to work with the superintendent on approved topics. If you've approved the topic and they're working with the superintendent, what he really said is, if we put together a presentation or we're doing something like that, will we come back to the board for approval? And he said, no. If you're working with the superintendent, you've already, you count on him as being professional, that it would go forward like that. The more important thing would be that you, the actual topic that you're going to work on is what is approved. So it's, I don't think it's difficult, in that case, to set up a charge that allowed you to do that. The most, most important thing would be that you actually approved the topic that they're working on, so.
Okay.
So.
That's fair.
So, Tom, do you want us to take that back to policy, or?
Well, I think we get to approve it for first read and then come, come back.
Okay.
Well, I have.
Denise?
Well, my understanding is how we discuss this at policy committee is if we approve it for first read, because both those policies are required to have a public hearing before they're changed. And so I think, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that what we were planning to do is if they're approved for first read, we would actually have the public hearing at our next school board meeting, June 3. So we wouldn't actually do anything else with these two policies until after the June 3 meeting. So, and I feel like it would make sense for them to go forward together, if possible, because what we would do is we'd have the public hearing, we have to have them, each public hearing, a public hearing on each one. But we'd have a public hearing on one, close that public hearing, public hearing on the second one, close that public hearing. And then, my understanding would be, after that, we'd take it back to policy committee to make any suggested changes before we brought it back to the board for second read. Did I get that right?
That is exactly right.
Okay.
So these two are very different than your usual policy practices, because we've agreed that these governing policies would require a public hearing before action of the board.
Well, what if we did not approve these for first read tonight, that they would come back one more time, and we, we just, like, slow it down by a, a, a meeting? Would that?
It doesn't, it doesn't impact my work, so if you want to take more time.
Would that be all right? Al?
Well, can I just add one thing to the policy, since you can take it back? And so, when I look at, it actually applies to both advisory and this, there's, there's a significant communication problem with the committees to the board. I mean, the only information, for the most part, that's coming back is at the end of the meeting in like a little two-minute blurb, and it can be really sparse. So some of the committees, and we haven't updated the charges on the committees, so there's some committees I couldn't tell you what they've done. I mean, I'd be really hard-pressed to tell you exactly what they've done over the years, or over this year. So there needs to be a summary report placed at the end. And, you know, when, when we get to the end of the year, whatever, wellness generates a wellness report. It started in the advisory, like the ABC generated an end-of-the-year report. The long-range planning generates a report. And you see the communication problem where, like, first of all, the board turns over, committees turn over. When somebody comes in, they shouldn't be like, oh, what does communications do? Or what does wellness do? Or what is, that, that shouldn't happen. There should be a report that they can pick up and read. We also have, like, committees that we're either allocating money for, which is like strategic planning. I'm not really sure what the green teams have done over the years. And we're going to go into another budget cycle and allocate money to them. And then we have, like, 68 Hours of Hunger is, is raising money, but I don't really have any idea how much money you've raised, how you've spent your money. It doesn't follow any accounting practices that we use with anything else. So we really need to fix, and it goes across, and I'm not singling out any one committee, because it goes across every single one of our committees, that that needs to be improved. So that should be written in some way.
So, and I, I appreciate that. So the language currently there is the school board shall see that the public is made aware of the services directed by such committees, and shall see that the public is informed of the major conclusions and recommendations made by such committees. So in a way, it's in there, but you want to tighten up enforcement a little bit to say.
So like, the end of the year, summative report is generated, or something like that. Because again, it really, it's very unclear, and I sent Tom agenda-wise, that also we need to move the committee reports from, it's kind of buried in our agenda. It needs to move up. And if you look at, Kenny's on the town council, they very, at the very front end, they have the council roundtable, and they go over, they go over each of their committee assignments. And it, because at the end, there's almost like this rush not to ask questions and clarify. And you really, since it's the work of the board that we've authorized, you want to be able to ask questions of that. Is the committee really doing what we want? What is it doing? How is it working? So it should be given adequate time for the important, I mean, why have a committee if you don't know what it's doing?
So perhaps tightening up the language about reporting.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So could I ask, I think we need to retract the first read approval of BDF, which we did, because we want to bring that back and prepare a better first read, I believe.
A motion to reconsider our approval of.
Is that, is that the?
But we didn't have any changes to BDF, so why would we?
Well, we do, because Al just.
But you said the language was there, it's just a matter of us enforcing it.
But I think Al wants to see tighter.
I mean, I'm wondering, can you tighten it up in, you've done it for a read.
All right, so I know why.
It goes to you. I don't know quite how you guys' policy do it, but it's like.
Plus, I'm sitting here listening. We might need the separate policy for N68 Hours of Hunger, because it's a hybrid. It's, N68 Hours of Hunger is a regional, going bigger than a regional nonprofit organization. And I think our money is actually funneled through them. And I think many school districts have the program and has had trouble kind of getting the connection with the school, because they're an outside organization. And we're lucky that we have been able to connect. But it's a different kind of connection than wellness or what have you. And yes, we have raised lots of money, and lots of wonderful people have had food drives, and the, the need is there. But we're also under confidentiality. The committee has no idea who is being served.
Right.
Yeah.
That would be part of the reporting, though, the money.
So it is a hybrid kind of committee, so maybe we should come up with a separate policy for them. Yeah, do we report later on on school committees? Keep my report down.
I still think that BDF is fine, because we know it's only a first read, and we can take the, incorporate the discussion of the board and to the, into the committee level. I, it's so complicated and funky to start pulling things back once you've approved them.
Okay.
Let you guys do your.
So we've, we've approved, I'm sorry, which ones?
Well, BDF, but now we're talking about BBAA.
I'm wondering if we.
We made a motion.
I'm wondering if we could hold, hold BBAA and not approve it for first read, see it again. So we've not, we've not approved it, right, BBAA?
Correct.
Okay. Who made the motion? Was there a motion?
There is no motion.
I don't think there's a motion, so.
We'll just send it back to.
So send it back to the committee, and then we'll see it again for first read next time.
So you want to reschedule it?
Sorry, Denise?
I guess my only question then is sort of where does that lead? Because I really think, sort of, because the two policies are tied as far as the public hearing.
Public hearing.
We hold off on the public hearing then until, okay. So basically, we wouldn't do any, so what, you wouldn't see, in other words, you would not see BDF for second read at the next meeting.
Correct.
Just, that would, you wouldn't see BDF again until we straightened out BBAA, if that makes sense.
That makes sense.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I feel like I'm being very contrary tonight.
Smack it, Sarah.
But I'm thinking we really have the language all set for that one, and maybe we can just approve it right now as a board.
Which one?
The, the first one, that BB.
AA?
AA, because I think your concern would, which I, I think favorably of, and it sounded like Al did, too, is just adding that language to it, and are inherent in their charge. And then we've got a first read down.
I can live with either.
So I would, I will even make that motion, that we approve BBAA with the only change being the one-sentence read, "Subcommittees may also take action that have been previously authorized by the full board and are inherent," well, no, I, I think we do need an or, because we might not approve the action, or are inherent in their charge.
So Kenny, the suggestion I would make is if you're going to make a, a motion to approve BBAA for first read, that'd be the total motion. Don't make any changes inside because you're asking the policy committee to take it back and make those changes based on the discussion tonight. So you don't have to make a motion to change it specifically. You just need to say, I want this as a first read, get it on the docket, then policy takes it and works based on the conversation tonight. And then, you know, we'll bring it back to the committee when we have it.
That works for me.
The best we can, until the next time you guys take a shot at it.
Okay. So we're going to vote to approve it on first read, with those, with that consideration, okay?
Yep.
So do we have a motion? I'm sorry, I'm.
Motion, no second.
What?
There's a motion, no second.
There's a motion to approve, it's BBAA for first read. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Then it'll go back to the committee, and they, okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Thank you. Sorry, sorry, that got so tangled.
But, excuse me, Tom, I do have one question now, though. What, so where does that, because I'm on this public hearing thing. So where does that leave our public hearing? Do we want to have a public hearing, do we think, or we're not going to?
No public hearing until we get to the place where we're comfortable with the language.
Reasonably comfortable here. So we wouldn't be bringing it back for a second read. What would we be bringing it back for at that point?
The committee will make the suggested language changes, bring it back, ask the board if we're in the right place for the public hearing, ask them to take no second read until we have the public hearing.
Okay, so it's just kind of revisiting the first read, really, so, okay.
And my, my, the question would be, like, if you have committees like sustainability that do actions, whether, if it's a subcommittee or advisory committee, and it's not clear from this, which, what category it fits under, and they choose to do something that we don't authorize, but it's consistent with their charge, can they go ahead and do that? Or do they have to come back to us to authorize every action that they take? Because I think that's, that's the, that's the crux of it, it seems to me, okay? So if it's, okay. Okay. Thank you for, for dealing with that. School board committee updates? Maria?
And 68 Hours of Hunger. We did meet. We could not decide on the chair yet, because everybody wasn't there. As I said before, we have raised quite a bit of money, and a lot of helpful people doing food drives, which for me would be mega action, both to organize it and to bring it, then sort it. And whatever we can't use goes to one of the food pantries, so it involves logging. And so we have some wonderful members doing this. The biggest need right now is in the high school, where we have several homeless kids who couch surf and depend on the food. That is, in the middle school and high school, it's set up as a food pantry. They get to choose if they need food every day, they can have it. At the elementary schools, it gets sent home for the weekend. So it's certainly a good lesson for all of us to remember, that even in this wealthy community, we have kids that really need our help, so.
Great work, thank you.
I have a question, actually. So do you have a, a breakdown of the number of students that you're currently serving?
It's very flexible, because this population tend to, you know, one week, the family with three kids move out, then we don't have them. And the next week, somebody else moves in.
It's often a transitory population now.
It's a transitory.
Have you noticed, so one of the things was also, have you noticed an increase in number of students you've served? Because one of the things, the first year was to try to identify more students and serve more.
Yes, we.
So from the beginning to now?
Yep, for, for sure. And, you know, the, the awareness that the committee has placed on, on this issue, Maria, Carolyn, and the, and the volunteers from the community have done a great job. The principals are well aware of it. So now there is a resource available that is much more, there's much more awareness to it, so.
And what about a budget? Do you guys have a budget that you allocate for food per month, and then that sets up a goal for your fundraising? Or how do you work, like, how much money you need to fundraise to run 48 Hours of Hunger, and what you're monthly into, or, I mean, what you're buying? So, I mean, is there any kind of financial plan, or is it?
We have, like, yeah, sure.
I, Doris and I help out with the financial. We're bound monthly to balance to the penny and report to the broader organization of N68. They keep track of all our receipts. We keep copies of our statements. Any donations come in, there's, it's meticulous. I would say the accounting side of things is way more than I think we calculate on, on other, you know, different actions that we take. I know that Teresa helps me kind of keep track of every, all the ins and outs of that account. At our meetings, we report. We definitely have targeted certain times of the year that we do fundraising. But I think N68 has really rallied the community in many, many aspects, whether it's UNH students interact, coming to help the Rotary Club, Power of One organizations, local churches. We've had an incredible, I think, community effort around this committee, and Maria spoke to the committee members. We, Maria, I am the homeless liaison, so it, having me on that committee, we can, I can speak to what I'm, the challenges we have with our homeless youth. And I, I would say one of our biggest challenges, N68 supports the, the food component, but we have a real need in our community for transitional housing. I have two students right now that I could, could really use a month of safe housing to get them to graduation, and I can't find housing to save my life to find these, for these kids. And they're great kids. I mean, they're just.
Can you use money, like, the money that's part of your funding? Can that go towards, it only goes to food?
Only for food. So we are tied. I do have homeless funds, but we, you know, like Maria said, in, in our community, we still have a need, and.
Is that just because 68 Hours of Hunger says it only can be food?
Correct. We're bound by their, their bylaws and, and rules on how that money is, people donate money for that cause. We're responsible to use it for the cause, for the purpose in which they donated. So that, while it, it keeps us laser-focused on the food for students in need, it does kind of keep us more narrowly in what we can use those funds for. But I have found, we, as a homeless liaison, we've purchased brakes for cars and prom tickets and, you know, different things to help support our students, so.
Is there any way, like, with the charge wise, you can be something, like, Maria's talking hybrid, can you hybrid off of 68 Hours of Hunger, where you have? hybrid, can you hybrid off of 68 Hours of Hunger, where you have money that goes in? I mean, it's, I mean, so it's not quite as restrictive as that, that it's more flexible, it allows you to meet the needs.
I think those are private donations, Al. So if someone decided to make a donation to help other students, like scholarships for camps or things like that, they, whoever donates that money earmarks it for something.
Yeah, it's not directly connected to 68 Hours of Hunger, Al. It'd be a whole different type of reaching out to the community when you're looking for housing or support for sneakers or support for clothing, just a whole different. And, and we have vehicles that we do that, but so does the town. The town has a whole way of helping people as well.
And each school has a vehicle for that as well. So each school does that, but as far as N68 is concerned, Maria is absolutely right. We, on a monthly basis, have a great flux of how that's being used. One of the barriers, I think, or the challenges we faced, and we've kind of evaluated where we are on an annual basis, even monthly basis, is kind of where our pantries are located. It's kind of a funny thing. We thought where we first had them was this ideal private spot, but we found that that's one of our biggest barriers, because we need to shift it and move it to a, a more accessible location. And that's been a discussion that we've had ongoing up at the high school, of how do we provide greater access? So it's, I think the work of the committee has been tremendous. I think it's been eye-opening on a number of levels. And for me, N68 is a part of seeing how a community embraces, embraces all its members and, and makes them feel a, an integral part of their community and not marginalized. And I, I think it serves a, a real basic function of a good community, so.
Okay. Other committee updates? Kenny?
Just, just to reinforce what we said, the communications branch of the athletic fields is meeting tomorrow, and that committee has been split into three different groups. One is dealing with financials, one is dealing with the planning, actually, you know, the, what kind of surface and configuration. So I'm on just that one component. The, the whole committee will then regather as the individual parts do their work.
Committee, Denise?
Just that long-range planning is having a meeting in June, so it has not met yet since, you know, so we'll, we'll be having our first meeting in June.
Okay. Thank you. Other committee updates? Hearing none? Okay. Public comments? Yeah?
I'll be very free, though, because it's very late. I'm Jeannie Sowers, and I'm here representing the working group on school start-time laters. So we wanted to thank you all for making it a priority for the board for this year. We are very excited about that, and we are happy to help in any way possible. I want to reiterate, though, on behalf of the members of the working group, that we actually consider this an urgent issue. I noticed that it's under wellness and mental health, which makes a lot of sense. It affects wellness and it affects mental health, but it also affects academic achievement, and it affects academic outcomes. And I think there was a really great discussion in the room tonight about the impacts of testing, and how that actually disrupts school education. And the same with the half-day, full-day thing. I think that this is the single thing that we can do that will actually have the biggest outcome on academic performance in the district. So if you think about a week or two of testing and what that does to their schedules, and you compare that to sleep deprivation each and every day for each of our students, I think it's very clear that the academic impacts of addressing that sooner rather than later are of utmost importance. So for those of us who are in the working group and outside it, who have been contacting us, or the teachers that have contacted us, I think that having a staff committee is just fabulous. And again, we welcome the work that's going to come on this, but we also want to emphasize that for many of us, it's an urgent issue. It's not a future issue that doesn't, that we see the impacts every day. So anyways, thank you all for your work, and again, for all of your very late hours, many weeks in and many weeks out.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dean Rubine from L.A. Good to see everybody here. I'm a hermit. I went on the Disney field trip this weekend with the East River Middle School Jazz Band, and Carolyn was along as a parent, and the kids were just phenomenal. They played at Downtown Disney on Friday at noon, and they were just so great. It was unbelievable. They were enthusiastic and just perfect and solid, and gathered a, a huge crowd compared to, I sat through the previous band. And just incredibly professional, you would not, I talked to the, the Disney staff, and they weren't good compared to a middle school band, or good compared to a, a high school band, but they were just a professional band. And really, they were saying, this is, this is the best band we've seen. And it was 86 kids, and, you know, Mr. Irvin, and supported with two dozen chaperones. I was not one. My wife was. And Laurie Gaylord, of course, did a, did a whole bunch. And it was incredibly organized. The kids were right there, and then Mr. Irvin is, make sure they enjoyed every minute of part-time, they could squeeze out of that place. And the other thing that happened is on Sunday, they go into the recording studio, and a professional arranger, whose name was Alan Gray, came and conducted their set. They went through their set, and he gave them pointers, and they actually recorded that. And then for the final hour of that, he gave them all parts to a score they have never seen from Tangled, and the kids' site read it, and they synced the music up to the actual animation of Tangled, so they have a little DVD of the kids actually performing the score of a part of Tangled. And they just did so incredibly well. You guys would have been amazingly proud of them and, and of all, so, and there were so many volunteers. This is such an incredible effort that he does for organization. There were many, many volunteers that made, make this trip work, not just the chaperones, but parents at home. I just want to say to Mr. Irvin, he thanked you for doing such a wonderful job for our team.
Thank you. Are there public comments?
Can I just, I missed a board comment. Can I do one?
Quick, yeah.
It's so fast.
Okay.
I just want to thank the administrators for all of your work you put in on helping with our goals. Your input was really valuable. Thank you.
Okay. So you have a meeting on the, June 3rd, it's our next meeting, at the middle school? So could we have a motion adjourned?
Some.
Moved by Maria, seconded by Al. All those in favor, raise your hand. Meeting's adjourned.
Right.